To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity that you've given us to be around each other. We ask God that you will give us guidance, that you will give us wisdom, that you will help us to not take offense, Lord, in anything, that we will act in love in everything that we do, and do everything for your glory in Jesus' name.
Roll call. Try to stay on task tonight. He does, I'm sorry.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellert?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
And Counselor Johnson is not present. Cornice declared.
We don't have any modifications. Approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting, April 18th. Are you in approval of council table?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, a second time. It's been moved and seconded for the approval of consent agenda. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellert?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Arbor Day proclamation. Where's Rob?
Rob's not available, so we need to read the proclamation. And it will be on May 17th at 10:00 in the Sancho's Park.
Is that in my packet?
Yes.
That's what I need to read?
Yes.
Do you want me to read that? Please, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, if you would, please. No, you do not.
Okay.
Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special navy synthesized the planting of trees and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation, the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resources can be as paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Dale Becker, Mayor of the City of Montevista, do hereby proclaim, May 17th, 2019, Arbor Day, in the City of Montevista, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and our lands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the hearts and promote well-being of this future generation, dated the second day of May in the year 2019. So proclaim. That's all we need to do, right? Thank you. Citizen comments, special presentations. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, please file the appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So it looks like we have Friends of Sky High Park RFP design, RFP for design. Carla and Kathy, please state your name.
Kathy Rogers.
Carla Schreiber.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, thank you for having us this evening. We're happy to have gotten to this part of the process. It's been kind of a long process and something that I think is really important to Montevista and well beyond in the entire San Luis Valley, so we're here to tell you about that tonight. The Friends of Sky High Park in conjunction with the Chamber and the City of Alamosa...
Montevista.
Or, excuse me, I'm wearing my Alamosa hat, aren't I? The Montevista City announced the RFP proposal for the design-build project for the replacement of Sky High multi-purpose building on March 27th in 2019. We received three bids, and Carla will go over those with you.
Hi, Counsel and Mayor and staff. Again, three bids were submitted. The proposal was announced on March 27th of 2019, and again, we received three bids by the due date. They were Alcon Construction in conjunction with Spencer Architect Studio out of Alamosa, Ron McClure Architect from Del Norte, and then Ninan Archstruction, didn't even know that was a word, from Fort Collins. Again, they were all three submitted by the required date and time. We had a few other inquiries, but they did not submit bids after the inquiry. All three bids were very professional in nature, and we have copies here if anyone would like to review them and look at them. Quick summary of the bids. We actually bid two different phases, and summary-wise, Alcon Construction and Spencer Architect bid for Phase 1, $54,670, and for Phase 2, they bid $204,930. They have no, neither Alcon nor Spencer have any litigation, arbitration, any kind of regulation actions against them. They had the insurance, they showed us their insurance, as did all the others. They're proposing to work with Bergath and then Summit as their structural engineer people. Then Ron McClure Architect, what he bid was 5.25% of the total construction cost, was how he submitted it. And so if you guesstimate, as a wild hair, assuming it's a $5 million project, it would be $262,500. He was proposing to work with Wool Warehouse out of Albuquerque and Van Gizen out of Alamosa and, oh dang it, LaHera was the structural engineer. Ninan, who is out of Fort Collins, they actually submitted a little different request, proposal. They didn't actually bid it as Phase 1 and Phase 2. They called it a collaborative design package, or CDP, and their bid was $35,000 for that, which was just basically the preliminary. They all have in-house engineers and architects and that kind of thing. Going back to Ron McClure, he had no litigation, arbitration, or any regulatory actions against them, as the last five years is the proposal implicated. Ninans, they're, they do have some litigation, arbitration proceedings with Mapleton Public School and Cambridge Hospital, so they do have some outstanding items they're trying to work out with some other businesses. They have done quite a bit of business here in the valley. Kathy has worked with them at the hospital, had no issues. I think they did several of the high schools here in the valley, and there were some issues there. So that did come into play when we did our evaluation. We did have a spreadsheet of the proposals for the analysis. A review committee met, and it consisted of people from Friends of Sky High, the Chamber, and then some people from City Council as well. Any questions? I guess, you know, we are making a recommendation because that they did answer the RFP and address all two phases, and because of their being local and no arbitrations, we're recommending that we bid be awarded to Alcon Construction and Spencer Architects.
Yeah, and to kind of expound on what Carla said, I think our committee that met, we really tried to, you know, look at that carefully. Alcon is well-known in the community and Spencer Architects as well, and we think their bid and everything just fell into place for us, so that would be our recommendation tonight for City Council's consideration for those reasons. And I think you received this electronically, and we have the full proposals here for your view if you'd like.
And I believe City Council has a couple copies for their files, and the Chamber has a couple files for their, or copies for their files, so it's readily available to the public if anyone would like to go.
We have more if you even look at them.
And we could also submit them electronically if anybody wants to review in detail.
Questions, comments?
No, thank you for the work on this. Carla is the workhorse on this. She, she put, she sharpened her pencil and has gotten, she has worked really hard on this, so I want to thank Carla for that.
To me, this is a real tedious part. It's very key and important, but it's very tedious and boring to make.
It's an important piece.
Yeah, it is. It's very important.
No, we have a great team of people, and the Chamber has been very active and, and been great participants, so we've appreciated that.
Mayor Forrest set in on this piece of discussion, and we really appreciated that. Of course, it's the project. You guys are the important ones, so we're here to help and to be supportive, and it's important as a community to come together and make this happen. It's long awaited.
It's exciting.
It is.
And it's moving forward, and there's actually something that we can look at as another step toward that redo out there.
And for this, just to recap the finances, and correct me if I'm wrong, Forrest, we have a DOLA grant, and the city's pledged a little money, and then we have the $200,000 currently in a bank account with, from the Alcot Foundation, is our current.
Mr. Speaker, could you say that over again, please? You have $200,000 in the bank, what?
From the Alcot Foundation. And we also have a DOLA grant to the city, I shouldn't say we, the city has a DOLA grant approved, and the city has also pledged a little bit. It'll be the whole, the whole, we're planning this to be a two-year project, and it would actually, the way the project has morphed is, it would be the whole building, including the large open area, mhm.
Question on that.
Yes, it'll be a rebuild of the multi-purpose building of Sky High Park, which is currently down.
And then we have two, so everybody keeps telling me that we need to do this, but that's not true.
No, that is not correct. I saw that on Facebook today. And I can provide a full report from the Council regarding that building, but essentially the issues that the structure has is the chlorine need to the masonry, and so the building itself that houses the pool, and there are two separate buildings, the pool building is structurally unsound. Pool liner itself is cracked, there's a lot of issues with that whole building, and so that would be fully demolished under this proposed direction. And then the multi-purpose building itself would also be demolished, and a new multi-purpose facility would be built.
The city has acquired structural engineers. The large open area, the multi-purpose building, when the grandstands was built, the old grandstands in the multi-purpose building were tied in together, and when we built the new grandstands, those two buildings or structures were no longer tied together. And those huge crossbeams are now a concern because those walls have no rebar in or structural, so it's a matter of time that that concrete cement bars they're going to give away at some point in time. You know, we don't know for sure, but that's the concern, is it's a building that has served a lot of use for the city, but at some point in time, it outserves its life, and we need to get something new and more updated. The electricity, the electronics are all not fit for, you know, functions of today's world. So that, we're just trying to modernize everything and get it up to more safe standards.
Is there any part, any kind of, it has to do with having, doing a vehicle?
Excuse me, ma'am. When it's citizen comments, then we'll have you come up, if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
I thought she had asked over to the president.
It was more sofa up here.
Oh, I see. For you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just here to present this, please.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, because I know it's been a long time coming.
It's a huge goal, a big step.
It is. It'll be well worth it when it's completed, and we appreciate you allowing us to be part of it, and thank you so much for your support, and we'll be happy to move forward.
I'm excited.
Yeah, we are. So we humbly ask for your consideration of our recommendation for that bid, and then we'll move forward from there. Perfect.
Yep, I think head nod to what you need, and you got it looks to me like everybody.
Do we need a, do we need a vote?
I think a formal.
Actually, because the city is not a direct party to the contract, a notice by a claim and not, if you will, is actually adequate to let them move forward.
Perfect. All right, make the notifications and keep going.
Carry on, girls.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit to, limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. Please come up to the podium, state your name, and I believe there's a paper there to sign.
Okay. Before or after? My name is Edith Johnson. I grew up in Montevista, owns the ranch where I grew up. I was a 4-Her during the time that I believe, this is what I believe, I don't know that this is true, but I believe that in 1964, the 4-H Foundation, somehow we had some kind of grant, and all the 4-Hers in the tri-county area started working for that pavilion, for the 4-H Foundation. I, of course, grew up, left the valley, and returned in 1994. I don't really know what's going on, other than I keep hearing that they're going to desecrate the pool, in other words, tear it down totally. And so I would like, my saying to be here is, you know, if it is poisonous and if it's structurally unsound, I understand. But I'm a person that likes to build, not desecrate. And so I was wondering, I have talked to other people in the town, and I am the person that put the thing on the Facebook to please everybody to move today, you know, let's get a pool in Montevista. You know, I know that there's grant writers out there about, last week in either the Journal or in the Courier, there was a $5,000 grant that somebody could write for small communities or a city, you know, to have the funding to improve some part of the city. I didn't get everything involved in that, I am not a grant writer, but I know that, I think his name is Mr. Zack, he's a teacher, high school English teacher in Alamosa, wrote the grant for the Del Norte brand-new school. He was a professor. I am proposing that we at least explore value for grants for a pool. I brought some information today in, across the country. There are lots and lots of grants for small communities to build pools or have pools for, you know, seniors, obesity problem, insurance problem, all kinds of problems. You know, we have those available to us. I haven't had time to do all the research, but I am proposing that we at least think about having a pool there, either if they have to desecrate what's there, rebuilding, or, you know, find a way. You know, there's all kinds, now that the solar energy, you know, we have that available to us, it has gone down in price, there are grants out there, I'm sorry, I'm not as prepared as I need to do, but I would really like to see some discussion or be on a committee or do something so that Montevista could have a pool there. And I know that there's other that do support that, so. No, we appreciate your comments. We do. I have been taking care of family for a long time, and I am a teacher, I'm not teaching anymore, I'm not caregiving anymore, so I have a time. And I'm not, I don't want to be politically involved, I just want a pool. There you go.
Thank you. Is there anybody else with comments? Please state your name.
Margot Alexander. Hello, everybody. And I just have a quick little comment to make. This has been a really busy week with meetings with the council, like different things going on in town, and I just want to put it out there, I sure would like to see more members of the council, one of you there, you know, with different things. Gary was at two of the meetings, Kathy was at one, and I know we all have obligations and things to do, but there was the National Day of Prayer this morning, and there wasn't anybody there, you know, from the council. So I'm just saying, if you can make it, it would be nice to see y'all faces, one of you or something, at some of these events. And the other thing I wanted to ask, um, oh, good heavens, I can't even listen to you. Do we, are you the city attorney permanently? I'm just putting this out, I don't know. I, you at the beginning, when y'all became a council, and Mr. Farish left, and you came in, you were temporary, has that changed yet? Has it been officially done? I'm just asking. Okay, is there anything that y'all are doing to make this permanent or not? Do you need to do this? I don't know, I'm just asking the question, because I'm on the committee to review the city charter, and there were some things in there that just brought back to my attention. So just putting that out there.
Well, Margot?
Yes, sir.
When the new board got elected, and the lovely times that we had through all of that, Mr. Treheal was gracious enough to apply for an interim, and I made the comment that it would be six months to a year, and then we would open it back up, and I know we are over a year.
Oh, okay.
But it's, that's something we're looking at.
All right.
Okay, so.
We'll see you later.
Well, no, and that's understandable, because I've been asked that by other community members as well, if we were going to do it. They're holding me to my guns, and I said we'd do that, so we will. It's just been, it's been running smooth, and it's been some really rough waters to get to this point, so, okay, we're just easing into this.
That's, that's fine, I just thought I'd ask the question. And thank you for what you all are doing, I know everybody's busy, but, you know, once in a while, come to some of these things. The prayer this morning, that was outstanding. There were five ministers in the Methodist church, and it was just, it made me proud to be on there to see this happen. So just put this out, if there are events you can go, please.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else? Contracts, agreements, and leases. Airport Improvement Program Agreement for transfer of entitlements.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. So what's this all about? Well, I think Rob has probably touched on this before, but the way a small airport FAA grants works is kind of a pool program. So we're allocated a certain amount of money every year, and so are some other airports in our region. And what we do is, we transfer our entitlement to an airport that the FAA picks, they get our chunk of money for this year, so like every three years, it comes around, and then we get money. So, you know, right now, we're in the middle of a planning grant, and that was $355,000, give or take, and that was an FAA grant, I think it's, you know, $340,000, and we have 15 in match. So that $340,000 was like three years of funds coming together and coming back to us, and then the FAA has scheduled things for us like this master plan. So essentially, all this document is, is an approval for your signature, Mayor, of us to transfer our entitlement to the other FAA-recommended airport, and we're in the middle of spending their transferred entitlement right now. Rob could have said it better, but that's basically what that's about.
Okay. Because that's a huge project that we're getting ready to gear up on.
Right, and in a couple of years, our next scheduled project is a runway resurfacing project. We also have applied with our group during our master planning for some FAA unencumbered funds, that if we get that, if we get those, we would actually do our runway resurfacing next year, or maybe even still this year, just probably next year with the environmentals. But then, when our money came around, then we would do a runway expansion project, which is already in our current master plan, so it'd make it a little bit wider, a little bit longer, that kind of stuff. So I'm not sure, we're supposed to hear about that grant in April, said the FAA, so I'm thinking June, but that's kind of where that stands. So yeah, we are getting our payback for this, if you will, in advance.
Very good. All you need's a head nod.
Yeah, if the council agrees, then you can put John Henry on that tonight.
Very good. Staff report, staff proposals, reports, and actions. Forrest?
Okay, so this evening, this will be a little bit more extensive than what I usually do, because a couple of issues have come up, if you will. I did want to congratulate the PD for their Easter egg hunt, it was pretty cool, it was fun, and there were a lot of kids in attendance, and they hoovered up all those goodies, and there was a lot of stuff out there, and it was like boom, which is what you expected of. So it was a lot of fun, there were a lot of officers there, and even from other jurisdictions, so it was nicely done. And it seems like this year, there were lots of Easter egg hunts, but they were all spaced out, so the kids could hit them all, I think, so. Okay, so the world of DOLA mini-grants. So the city had two applications for DOLA mini-grants, totally separate. You're allowed in the current application period to have two mini-grant applications, and then after...
and then after June 30th, whatever's not been applied for can be applied for, even if you've already applied for year two, that's the basics. The first grant that the city submitted was for a sidewalk replacement project in front of City Hall for this summer. It would improve the sidewalk from the front entrance down to the parking lot, which is starting to settle, it's got a lot of cracks. And then, if you looked at it as going that way as a T, as it goes out, where we have our handicapped accessible parking spaces, the concrete there is badly spalled, cracked, et cetera. So all of that would get dug out, new concrete would put in, be put in there, and that would be that project. We do have to bid it, but the estimated project cost about $9,000, and this mini-grant would pay for half of it. So that was approved. And then there's the second grant application, which was for the golf course. And unfortunately, the rules on that program changed unbeknownst even to the people that oversee the grants. So these grants are managed by the Development Resource Group, by Sarah Stover, who's a great person to work with and a great hand, and, you know, the idea was that this would be able to purchase a new greens mower for the golf course, and it's a 50/50 deal. Well, you know, DOLA's actually the ones that sign off on these grants, and it's a really nice short project, and the grant that was written was really good, and I will be honest with you, I think Sarah thought it was a slam dunk, I certainly did by reading the rules. But the response from DOLA is that they are no longer able to approve equipment purchases for projects, which Sarah was unaware of that, I was certainly unaware of that. I mean, the grant literature says that that's eligible, so that was very disappointing. You know, certainly, you know, some members of the council, a lot of you have been out to the golf course, and we had a tour last night, it seems like a week ago, but that was last night. And the primary part of that was to look at the buildings, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that tonight, but there's certainly some needs for some work on those. But this kind of puts this, without the grant, what you all want to do with it, and maybe I'll kind of go through the rest of my report, and you all can have a discussion about how you'd want to handle that. I did place a memo regarding available funding on your, on the DS this evening, I thought I had sent it this morning, but things were a little hectic this morning, or today. Not that they usually aren't, but there were lots of interesting things, and I'll touch on at least one of those. The second thing is, you're all aware that you have a request in your pack, and a letter written from a representative of PETA regarding the circus, one of the circuses is coming to town. Now, I will point out that the circus that's referenced in that letter is not coming to town. It's Jordan World is the one that she listed in her letter, and the actual circus is Barnes and Carson, or Carson and Barnes, and theirs is called Circusaurus. So it's a different circus altogether. I did explain that to her, which she disagreed with me, and I'm like, that's fine, if you'd like to write a letter to the council to consider that, that's great, which she did. You also received an email today about Barnes and Carson circus, and, you know, it was kind of graphic, and, you know, obviously, there's no representatives of that group here this evening, that I believe. Kind of puts you all in a dilemma, and I'm just going to run through that really quick, I didn't write an additional memo, but, you know, we're kind of thinking about this. So Sky High Park does not have a policy on circus animals. Historically, it's not been an issue, I realize it is an issue for people, but we don't have a policy that tells the circus, when you sign up to rent the facility, that you cannot have animals in your circus. Okay? So we have two circuses, the Shrine Circus and the Carson and Barnes, both which have signed rental agreements with the city at this point, and both are coming in May. Now, you could, per the letter, request that the circuses don't have animals, you know, and that's certainly something you could do, and Mr. Trujillo, sorry, could weigh in on that. You know, from a staff standpoint, we're kind of like, we made a rental agreement with somebody that we didn't have a restriction on, so, you know, if you all want to consider a policy, that would be a policy that the staff would write up, and that you could approve the policy, and then that would go forward involving all future rentals of Sky High to circuses. If you have a circus here that you cannot have animals in your act, that's something you could do, that we certainly legally could do going down the road. There are communities that have things like that. We don't. So it's a bit of a dilemma at this point in May, when these circuses are two and three weeks out. So that's another thing y'all can discuss, and if you have a course you'd like staff to take, we will do whatever you'd like to on that. I just have concerns about renting a facility to somebody, then, you know, imposing additional restrictions, when you didn't have them in place, and there's no policy that addresses that. You know, we have put other restrictions on Sky High, like we have a policy that says we won't rent to X or Y, not that it affects the First Amendment in any way, but that do restrict certain kind of rentals. But it's pretty broad, you know, like last year, they had the BMX thing, that was really cool. I guess some people didn't think so, but in any case, you know, it's a little bit of a sticky wicket for you guys to think about. So I kind of wanted to hit on that this evening.
It's a dilemma.
It is a dilemma. I certainly understand their concern, PETA's concern on that, I do understand that. But, you know, and as I said to the nice young lady from PETA that I had a discussion with, I said, you know, that's not really a policy issue for the city manager to resolve. It would be kind of arbitrary for me to make up my mind, because either way, you know, it's more of a political issue rather than an operations issue. So that's why I brought that to you, because it's not really in my wheelhouse, so. And just an interesting thing from today, that's totally unrelated and much a little more comical perhaps than this, was, you know, we have some great new businesses starting up, and things are happening, and they're going on, and today was kind of interesting. So the Facet Building, they ran into some problems as they're doing their rehab with their sewer line. That happens in older buildings. And so in their process of installing a new sewer line, they discovered that the sewer line from the museum goes into their sewer line in a really strange direction. So instead of going out of the building to the east, it actually goes to the west. And if you're all familiar, you've got the Facet Building, the hallway, and the museum, and those are two separate properties. Well, the sewer line from the museum goes west into the hallway and joins the Facet's line, the Facet Building's line. So they discovered that, and that line is ancient cast iron, like the ones that they're replacing. But they kind of got into it, you know, and so we had a number of calls today, and I sent Lowell down there, and then I went down there and looked at it, and they do have a solution for it, but the solution's short term, because they need to get their sewer line in and get it covered up. And they basically trenched inside that hallway from the west and east is where the sewer line is, which, under concrete, which is, okay, I guess, unusual. And anyway, so they have it out to the saddle, and they're ready to hook up. But basically, we had a discussion today, and I authorized them to tunnel right under where the bathroom is and put in a PVC pipe. The cast iron's actually, it's got a bow in it, and so that would explain the toilet issue, the problems that they were having in the museum for a number of years. So that was kind of interesting, a bunch of emails and phone calls on that this afternoon, but it was also typical, when you get in rehab, and you're like, whoa, wow, and it probably made sense at one point. But anyway, we'll get that fixed. I, I don't know, it was one of those, and it's kind of an emergency, because they're going to close that up, and they want to get it done as soon as possible. But it will flow in the right direction, so. Because it is supposed to go, grab your feet downhill when it closes, so. So that's really all I have. I mean, maybe after Anika's report, if during the council portion of the session, you want to discuss these two issues, we can do that. I'll also point out, in regards to the swimming pool query, I could provide a report to the council at the next meeting. I spent a whole lot of time in 2015 working on that issue. I also have past experience in another community that had a seasonal outdoor pool, really aware, well aware of the costs, both of building one and operating one, and we did develop budgets performance for a pool in Montevista. It is fairly expensive. And, you know, there are definitely grants for outdoor pools. Indoor pools are a much different critter. In fact, today, I get all these things like Water and Waste Digest, another exciting e-publications, and I actually read stuff in there. And they were talking, they had a thing from the city of Houston, and you think, the city of Houston, giant city, and they were talking about, they got a $250,000 grant from the Water, Land, and Conservation Fund, the US fund, for their, you know, $3.5 million pool project. The bulk of the remainder of that was actually paid for through a mill levy recreation tax. So, you know, back in 2015, we were talking about a recreation district kind of approach, and so even somebody as big as Houston, you know, in order to build this facility, and you think, we always think these big cities have lots of money, but in order for them to do that, they actually had a tax issue, created a district, and got a grant which helped. But that's also an outdoor pool, so. But I will make a, I'll create a report for you for the next meeting, that the public can read as well, and we'll just talk about some of the issues. Okay, that's all I have, unless you have questions. All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Kids Connection.
Good evening. It feels really weird, because I feel like I'm in the middle of everything, not the very end, so I'm considering that. Um, well, I feel like I haven't been here in a long time. I think I was the last month here, it might have been February. I really can't remember, all the months are running together, so I gave you a rundown of March, even if I've already given it to you, I apologize. But, so, we're looking forward to summer planning right now, that's been keeping us really busy. We have so many kids, I can't even keep track of them. We've been hitting between 65 and 70 every single day, serving over 55 each day for staff. It's been, it's been a lot of fun, I'll just say that. And since we have more sunlight after school, trying to keep them outside as long as possible, but you can only keep them out there so long before they just completely lose all control of everything. I'm putting together the summer schedule right now, we're working on, we have some applications that have come in to hire summer staff. We've picked six of them right now to move forward to interview process, and we should do that next week. We'll see what comes in. Tomorrow, I will be attending the job fair at the high school tomorrow, and we'll see if you have any interest there. I will be representing the city of Montevista for just, for Kids Connections, Kids Connections position, and for the Parks position that Rob has open right now also. So hopefully, we have some luck with that. That's about as far as I am into summer, even though it's like four weeks away. It'll be like crunch time once I have staff members actually hired, that's probably the most important part. We've been busy rearranging the club, trying to make more sense of some of our areas. We built some shelves into some of those recessed areas and the closets that were just empty space, so now we've created much more useful space in those rooms. We also, let's see, March, we ended up, we finalized March with spring break, we visited Fort Garland Museum and their community center to go swimming. We went to the bowling alley here, we took two separate groups to the bowling alley here so that the kids could bowl. And then we did a matinee at the Valley Theater, I think it was on that Thursday, to watch a movie over there, and I think we had like 50 kids in attendance, it was a lot of fun. April, kind of just completely disappeared. I can't think of anything really memorable that happened in April that I could share with you, because it was all like one day right on top of the other. Yesterday, myself and three additional staff members got our medical administration training, so now we are fully compliant with all licensing standards. And I believe it was in February, we actually got a healthcare consultant hired for Kids Connection, and we're utilizing a partnership with Rio Grande Public Health, and Paul Worts, the nurse through Rio Grande Public Health, is now our health consultant. So if we have any kids that come in on medication, that need inhalers, have emergency, like EpiPens, we are fully capable of carrying and administering medication if needed. And that's been a long process, about six years trying to find someone that wasn't going to charge us an arm and a leg to come in and do the consulting. And Paul's also not only our consultant, but will do all of our medical training, so he'll do our first aid and CPR training, our standards of precautions, precautions training. He'll take care of the whole public health side of it, just to make sure that we're compliant with all licensing standards. So finally have every single check mark checked off on that licensing list, and we are fully compliant. Um, excuse me. So at the end of May, we will be closed the 20th through the 21st, or 24th for staff training. We'll train that whole week and get everybody ready to go. That's the last week of school, so parents have to find care for their children for the half days after school and for one Friday versus the first week of summer, where it'd be full days of childcare. So we choose to close the last day of the school year, just to make it a little easier on parents for childcare. Like I said, a consistent attendance at 50 to 65 this week, so I wrote this on Monday, and every day this week, we've had over 65. The second I put a number on a piece of paper, they're like, nope, that's a cute little number, let's go a little bit higher. Our Fridays, too, have really picked up. Before, so at the beginning of the school year, our numbers were still pretty low, until we hit 2019, and then all of a sudden, our Fridays really jumped. We were seeing anywhere from 15 to 20 on Fridays, now we're seeing at least 40 every Friday this school year. So Fridays have been really, really busy. Other than that, that's pretty much what I've been up to, what the club's been up to. It's been crazy and chaotic over there, but we're surviving. I will let you guys know that in, I believe it was the beginning of March, we received a $5,000 donation from Laia Lee Foundation. They are dissolving their, their organization, and so they wanted money to go to organizations to create that, create a lasting impact on the community. There are some, excuse me, some specific guidelines as to how we can spend the funds, so we're kind of holding on to it and trying to be really creative, so that whatever we utilize the money for, it's something that's going to last a long time, and we can kind of show off, like because of them, this is why we have it, so. Other than that, that's pretty much Kids Connection. Questions?
You're a tough girl, that's all I got to say.
I had my patient's test this last couple of weeks. Today, I have two boys that have very similar personalities that just can't stop it, they just can't zip it at all. And I had to hold, today, coming back from the playground, because one of them bumped into the other, he fell down, well, that one got up, tried to chase him with a rock. So I got one seated on the stairs, and then the other one refused to leave the playground without me, and it happened to be the two boys that just couldn't get along, so I was walking down the sidewalk, with two of them in my hands, and they're back and forth at each other the whole time, and there was not one thing that I could say to get them to stop, and he was just smiling the whole time, like waiting for someone to walk out and flush it really happily. I got to the club, and Mom was standing outside of one of the boys, and I just smiled at her, and she got mad at her son, and she told him, just knock it off, stop, just zip it right now. And I was like, this was like so much fun. I looked at her, I was like, that was the most interesting laugh I've ever had. But it's fun, when you get to go home and laugh about what happened for the day, and you're able to keep your cool, and not completely lucid. able to keep your cool and not completely listen.
Well, I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Still enjoying it.
I sure am glad.
Yeah, thank you.
Which issue do we want to address first? Let's do the easy one first. You said that letter from PETA was in here?
Yes, sir.
Well, let us hear what council has to say.
Well, you all know how I feel about animals, and I'm very compassionate, and I don't like circuses in most zoos, and for all the reasons that are stated in the letter from PETA. However, I think from a legal standpoint, we've already accepted the contract, we've already made the rental agreement, and it might be something that we need to look at for the future. And I, is, can we do anything, Mike?
Well, certainly I would recommend it. Really not make a change in the middle of the stream.
Right.
I mean, I think if you were to look at this and check aside on some policies down the road, that would make sense to me. I think that would keep our legal contracts with these folks intact without a problem. So, I mean, I agree with a lot of what their position is, and how they treat the animals. I really think there's a lot of issues out there. Those, we've accepted them, we've accepted the deal, I presume we've accepted their money, and at this point, it's just down, a few weeks down the road, and they're going to have their, their program going. So I, I think if we were to try and change at this point, we just create a bunch of problems for ourselves that we don't need. I think if the council says, let's take a look at changing the policies, I'd say, okay, after these circuses do their program, let's take a look at it, see what we want to do as a city and as a council. But I certainly wouldn't recommend doing anything at this stage.
Right, and that's kind of how I feel. I mean, I'm not a big fan, and I know that the treatment of the animals isn't probably always what you wish it was, but we've already made that commitment. And I also agree with Forrest, it's a political issue, and really could turn into a legal issue if we changed it now. And I don't think that would be the wisest way to do.
Victor? I agree with Kathy. You know, it makes a good point, you know, you have to be careful, you know, especially with things getting, trying to, you know, everything getting ready to kind of pop off in the circus and everything like that. But yeah, I think we should look into it more closely after this.
I think the world has changed, and we might need to look at changing with it somewhat, but I'm not sure this is the best time.
I agree. I think we already got the policy, and like Mike said, we've already got, they've already leased, rented the building. Kind of look at this as being a, kind of like a two-edged sword. No matter which direction we go, we're going to catch one way or the other. So...
The one thing that council should always really be looking at, and I think, I mean, we are basically litigation free at this point, have been. And so, you don't want to open up that door and create a problem. Litigation costs us, insurance companies, the taxpayers, lots of money. I think we ought to kind of try and keep it where it's going.
We can look at the policy a little bit later and read...
Right.
And talk about it.
Right.
Just that conversation on it is good, or we need to...
Yes, sir. I think that's adequate. I will point out that Carson Barnes is a U.S.A. licensed exhibitor. You know, we did check that. So, the Jordan World apparently isn't, but once again, they were wrong. Jordan World is not here. We're not Carson Barnes, we're the company. We will follow your lead on that. Later on this year, we will look at some policies.
Well, it's not that we really have to have a policy to change it, but we can make the ruling where what they have to provide to prove what they do. So it may still happen, but...
Right.
It's, it's like DOT, EPA, OSHA, there's stipulations they have to do to make it right. And forgive me, what's our next subject Forrest? I'm sorry.
The golf course.
The golf course, huh. Sorry, and I apologize for missing that last night, but the potato plant is going strong, so I couldn't miss out on it.
Yes.
For the lawnmower?
Yeah, yeah. And council approved a $5,000, I don't know, match with the hopes that DOLA would match us on that grant. And it changed unbeknownst to anyone, even the folks in the office at, even, had no idea that DOLA had changed the capital improvements portion. And like Forrest says, we can revisit that, I think, after June. And I'd like to call and have a conversation with them before we close the issue, or make the decision, or authorize any more funding, or, that's how I feel. I think we've already offered what we felt like council was comfortable with, and I'm not sure that we need to offer more. Possibly they could come up with the additional funds, or I'm still not giving up on that grant. I think there might be a way to work that, so it happens. So that's my feelings on it.
How do you go? First of all, I'm curious if, if the grant is not, they said it was, they have, what exactly does capital need?
Well, see, that's what I'm going to ask them. That is, that is, that's what that is. And so we, we need to have the conversation.
Well, I think they're, and I will talk to you about, just you think about that. I think what they're looking at is that equipment that's not permanently affixed, isn't really a capital improvement. You have a mower, ten minutes, and then it can be gone. You know, if you build a structure that's permanently attached to the ground, and put equipment that's attached to it, I think that's, you know, typically that's capital structure.
Right.
So we could get them to further refine that, but I think as far as the mower goes with this source, it's probably not going to happen.
Not going to happen. Is there a way we can maybe get with golf course and have the conversation with them, and see if there's a way they can come up with any of that funding? It's, it's only a portion. There was money in that grant for a mower and some sprinkler heads or...
Right, but these sprinkler heads are in DOLA's response, but those are maintenance expenses.
Right, right. So, but, but my thought is, if you take off the, the amount we had included for the sprinklers, it isn't a whole lot for the golf course to come up with, if, if they had to come up with the additional...
$4,000.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know. I, I guess I feel like I need to have a conversation with them before we take any action. But that's me. I'm just wondering.
I think that's a good idea. I think talking to them, seeing if they can't come up with anything. And if, you know, worst case scenario, if they can't do it, then this, we can talk and see what we can do.
Right.
I, I have discussed that with her, unfortunately she couldn't be here tonight. You know, certainly within the realm of funding. And I, I just want to point out, like on the CTF level of funding. So our CTF funds, currently the bulk of those are going towards parks maintenance for the city. So in our budget this year, we transferred $121,000 to parks maintenance. That will leave with the revenues from CTF this year, the projected fund balance at the end of this year, we need $2,540, which, you know, doesn't cover the $121. So there's obviously been a spread in there, $40,000 that we'll have to come up with other sources to continue making our parks. So, you know, $5,000 in that, they didn't seem awful. $10,000 is $10,000. You know, there are, there are funds available in the general fund, but I think, you know, going through our budgeting process, we really discussed being very frugal with those.
I agree.
You know, we've had some costs, costs that we've incurred this year, like out of streets, another $10,000 on that street sweeper, which is 10, well, you know, we need to come up with a solution for that as well, and that is funded out of the general fund. So that part of the streets is general fund. There are no other funds for streets, unlike our water sewer enterprises. Any expenditures we have come right out of the general. So, you know, we've spent official, unanticipated $10,000 in the water enterprise, even though it's not entirely, well, it is connected. You know, we had the prospect pump, prospect pump project, you see that pass a few times. That's $100,000. It's of unbudgeted, unanticipated expenses. It's going to actually come in right close on that. It's great, except for, you know, all of our funds are interrelated, even though those are enterprises, that's $100,000. So we're right where we set our expenditure cap targeted for the water fund. Okay? And there are transfers for administrative operations out of the water fund, the general fund, as well as sewer fund. So, you know, pushing those down, we have a lot of projects this year, water and sewer, and we're going to get those done, but then we're going to get into recharge for next year. We had a good tax year last year, and we certainly had more revenue than we anticipated, which is good. But, you know, there's these unanticipated expenses. I mean, at the end of the day, the kind of funny sewer project I talked about, the unfunny part of that is at least $2,500. Now, you are a owns that property?
Yeah.
But where's the URA budget from? General. So, you know, there's a healthy budget in URA, and I'm going to guess it doesn't all get expended this year. But what if it does, and that's another $2,500 extra? And, you know, all this stuff kind of adds up. So, you know, while there are funds available, and certainly you're describing to spend them, Jenny and I are definitely in the same age of being serving for those funds. So, I think the idea of having further discussion with golf course, this kind of goes back to my previous discussion, you know, with council, matching type program, where, you know, council says X amount, and the match comes from someplace else, you know, up to a certain cap, which we never fully established that, but I still think that's a reasonable one.
I do too. I just don't feel like we have enough extra in the budget to devote to that. There's so many other things that are needed throughout the whole city that take care of the public and not just a focused place. And that's how I personally feel. And I think that council has, has, you know, devoted an amount to it, and, and we can follow through with that amount. But let's see if there's some other ways to improve and, and maybe match that, or either, you know, who knows? I'm not going to give up the ghost, but I feel like we do need to have more discussion about it, not that we can make a decision to...
No, I agree.
Think about it and figure it out. That's my approach.
I think that's a good idea, to have the conversation.
I think so.
Although that always can be one better than expected, I think.
Nope.
Council Committee, City Commission, and Council Report. Nita, do you want to talk about?
Can we be in here?
She'll be here on May 9th from 11:30 to 1:30. I have to be there all year, the spot for the lunch.
Just want to remind everybody about the water, the code of the water, reserving the water for the San Luis Valley. Montevista's doing their part. Let's just try to remind our neighbors nicely, you know, about the water, conserving the water. Also, if you're, if you're familiar with the code, you know, here in Montevista, share it with people. You know, there's a lot of people out there that don't know the code, and aren't aware of things, you know. I have to text message Nita sometimes, you know, because I'm like, oh, what was that? You know, and she gets back to me right away, and I'm like, I can, you know, spread the, spread the word, you know. So I just think it's important, you know, so that way they're familiar with it, so that way they don't end up with a ticket or anything like that.
Is it going out with the water bill again, like we did last year, are we putting it?
Yes, it is.
Good. That's a little reminder, that's a little notch.
And then also the, you know, the, the weather's getting warmer, people are staying out later. There's always chance for time to pick up during warmer weather. So keep your eyes open, you know, put your porch lights on, get you a dog.
I've got a dog. I've got some. I'm the person for that.
Kathy?
Let's see. Barbara Kaye, celebration, she's dark, everyone watches her, there's lots of 17, 18, 19. Just, I would like to make the work of this officer, change for us, because I think it's like, they've done lots of changes, there are changes for the, and they have days, which is, 60.
Next week?
Friday, Saturday?
So it's Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m., and then Saturday from 8:00 a.m. until noon, at the public workshop.
And you have to have proof of your city address, so I know.
They said to bring a...
The guys are so awesome, and you can go there, and it's that service. I think it's a great way to keep up, and your garden needs to keep happening. Your neighbor does, it's, it's a nice way to be with that. And it doesn't cost you anything, and it works as, definitely in the past. I just...
What else do you have time for?
You guys do work hard, too. You know, they're sitting there for all day...
So that was my morning prayer session, and I was with him last night, but I have gone through those buildings, so I didn't miss anything that I hadn't done before. And the Easter egg hunt was an amazing event, I was on the sidelines watching those kids tear out there, it was great, and we did not meet with the school, and we have a new superintendent in the future, Bob Webb is leaving, and so we'll have a new superintendent, and hopefully we can get him committed to meeting with us, as, or her, could be a female as well. So spay and neuter your animals, and the ordinance officer is a busy man, I'm telling you. We're full again at the shelter, I've got dogs, Eli has dogs, we're plentiful, and if you will spay and neuter, that will help. Mike and his cat ordinance is kind of going to be a helpful thing that everyone's anxiously awaiting as well. We'll be one of the few towns that actually has a cat ordinance. A lot of towns don't, they're very difficult, and so we're kind of at the forefront, and that's going to make us a little bit special in a lot of ways, if we can kind of control that problem and begin to get a handle on it, so. And I've had the people offer to help Mike if you're, if you're willing. Okay. You're in.
I'm in. Well, I apologize for not making it last night as well to the golf course, because I had full intentions, but when the potato planter is out of fertilizer, I had to go to the rescue, so. You know, with Victor, it is warming up, this is when we do start seeing a little more crime. I hate to say that, but I know there's stuff going on, there was some, and it's kids that I've seen do it. Just start paying attention to who's walking up and down the street, because they're, it's warming up, they're checking car doors, see if they're unlocked, and just, some of them just kid mischief, but some of them are pushing the issue a little bit, so just pay attention to your surroundings, always. I've noticed a few strange faces in the community too, that, you know, I don't like to pin anybody out, but just pay attention, that's all I'm going to tell you, pay attention. And outside of that, I really have nothing. I appreciate everything that the police force is doing, and the code officer, everybody in the community, and once, once again, we are community strong, only if we all work together. We don't always have to agree with each other on what's going on, but if something goes through, whether you like it or not, be supportive of it, because it's, it doesn't always make everybody happy, but if we support each other, right or wrong, then we're going to make it work, because there's a lot of positive happening in this community. And I've been hearing a lot about it, which I am thankful for. Prime example was Sunday, I was still working, I held a fertilizer spreader over to Farmington area, and while I was driving, I got a text message from somebody out of Suatch County that said, hey, I hear great things are happening in Montavista, you guys are doing a great job. And that was the best text message I had in a week, believe me. So people are paying attention to what's going on here, and we all could be proud of that as a community, and for the young people that are here tonight, don't be afraid to step out of your comfort zone. Honestly, it's not always, it's not always roses, let me tell you, but.
It's not comfortable.
Exactly. It's not comfortable, but don't be afraid to do it, okay? With that being said, we will adjourn until?
Recede.
Recede until?
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth.